Okay, we'll call a regular city council meeting on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, seven p.m. to order. Please stand and join me in pledging. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will call please.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Wendy Rainey.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
Kristen Carpenter.
Here.
And Ken Jones is absent. That's a quorum of cancel.
Please, any objection to the agenda as written? If none, then the agenda will be approved. Disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. If none, we move on to communications by municipal visitors. We have no guest speakers this evening, so audience comments regarding agenda items. Anybody want to come up and speak to us? For those online, we've got six or eight staff here, and I believe maybe we're going to get a report from one of our boards here, so chairpersons and representatives and boards and commissions. Come on, suspected that was way.
Yeah, I saw it coming. This one. Evening, Dave Janka, represent the City of Cordova, the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council Board. We had our annual Anchorage Board meeting two weeks ago, which I attended, and always interesting. And we reestablished a new member entity for the board, which for recreational interests. Used to have one, but that group faded years ago, never replaced it, and then the Coast Guard started questioning it, so we went through the process of that and actually made it a coalition seat, so it's not just one organization. Good updates from Aliaska Pipeline Service Company and what they're doing and what they're how they're coming along with addressing the items addressed in that assessment of risks and safety culture in Aliaska, that report that came out about a year ago. Tanker company fleet upgrades, the tanker companies had good reports on that. Some pretty big upgrades, which since they're going to be out of service, we're going to have ten to fourteen foreign flag tankers coming into Prince William Sound. So we've really been following that a lot, and we've gotten reports from both the pilots, tanker companies, such like that, about communications and just anything that just worry about what could happen with that. A lot of other things we keep reviewing. Get a good introduction by the new commissioner of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation. That was very good, and also a very good introduction report from the commander of the Coast Guard in Cordova, in Valdez, sorry. Also had a report by Brooke Mallory, Bert Adams, and B. Treadwell on the process of Shepherd Point. And there's also a USGS report on a landslide risk, a report that came out about landslide risks in Prince William Sound through special radar techniques. They've identified forty-three different potential landslide areas that eleven would reach water and potentially present a tsunami deal. The review will should have been in your packet, but I got it in later. It got lost in translation. Will be a link to that report on those landslides. It's got a lot of information in it. One thing we do at these board meetings is to go around the table, and everybody can say a little something about their town or what's going on. I talked about our Christmas Eve wins and how the harbor's moving along, and Shepherd Point has actually started. But I also talked about that I've heard that there's some in Cordova don't feel represented on the board. I think it's mostly toward this position and my position. And I get it. It's impossible for one individual to really represent every person and entity and all the issues and concerns one would have in a town. But the board of RCAC is really varied. If it's not the city board, there's a specific seat for fish, commercial fishing, specific sheet seat for aquaculture, the Chamber of Commerce for small business, this recreation seat, an environmental coalition seat, and the regional seat with the native corporation, the Chugatch Alaska Corporation. So there's a lot of possibilities in there to have input into RCAC besides just the city seat. And like I say, I can't cover everybody in one seat. And to date, it's been a year since I've been on the board. I've only had one person contact me about any issues or anything with it. So if, you know, if anybody has anything they want to share, you can call, text, email, fax, Facebook, whatever. I don't think you want all that information right now, now, but sure you can find some of it. I'm going to keep going unless you shut me up. Next month, thirty-fifth anniversary of the oil spill, which is just pretty hard to believe. And just so people know what Prince William Sound RCA Regional Citizens Advisory Council is, it was a group of people before the oil spill who started to put together an oversight group to the oil industry. Many of those people were here in Cordova and some in Valdez. And when the oil spill took place and Congress took action, that used to happen, they passed the Oil Pollution Act of nineteen ninety, which mandated the citizens oversight group. And since this that organization had sort of been started up a little bit beforehand, it was given to them through certification with the Coast Guard and guaranteed funding, independent funding from the oil industry to handle that mandate. So it's thirty-four years for the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council. And if people are interested in getting more involved and not necessarily a board seat, they have five separate committees, a science committee, a port operations vessel traffic committee, science committee, spill response, education and outreach, and really a lot of great people, all with the same thing they're trying to do is keep Prince William Sound from having another oil spill. We're only responsible for the terminal in Valdez and the oil tankers. Unfortunately, pipeline's not part of what they've allowed us to talk about. So that's just want to put that plug in exactly who we are and where it comes from and other opportunities. I also attended, I was in Anchorage, Alaska Marine Science Symposium. Amazing, I mean, head just bulges with all the had my grandson come and join me at the poster session at one point. He just looked around and says, this is just a room full of geeks. And it was great to have him come to that. The big issues at that were the seeing how things impacted by the 2016 heat wave. To me, the most drastic one was the huge loss of humpback whales, both in southeast Alaska and Prince William Sound. Thirty-five, forty percent of the whales are gone. A lot of that had to do with poor quality plankton and then in turn, poor quality forage fish. Microplastics were a lot, and if you're still not scared, Kinnick Tribe with ADEC had a PSP risk project going, and they found levels of PSP in pretty much everything from salmon to even chitons. Only in the shellfish were they of amounts that could hurt you or potentially kill you. But that was real surprising to me, some of that. We had a powerful and emotional keynote speaker they had, is the importance of incorporating traditional knowledge into Western science by a young woman from St. Mary's. And it got, this is a room of four hundred geeks, and it got standing ovation for her talk on that. That was really powerful with that one. But if there's any questions. One more thing, just remembered, so we'll hear about it soon. I was just filling in Robert Beadle's seat, which is coming up now and be done. I'm still interested in continuing on if you'll have me, and I guess that'll get notice to the city about reestablishing or redoing.
What's the turnover? Is it usually May?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, that'll be coming up. So that's our next meeting is May in Valdez.
They usually send us a letter.
They do, they do. They'll be in touch with me.
Yeah.
But I was looking, and I can't find a report from you, but I feel like you either called me or something, so would you try to resend it?
Yeah, I need to call next time. I need to call after I send it.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
My fault.
Who knows what happened?
Will you resend it? And I'll put it in the next package.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the school board's having a meeting tonight. Somebody from the hospital board. Yeah, so consent calendar is before you.
I did give both of them the Zoom also, so if they're not on, they're not here. Okay, so on the consent calendar tonight, Kathy Sherman, did you make it on the meeting? I thought she said she was, but I guess she's still absent. Tom Baylor on the consent calendar?
I'm sorry, say again.
On the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Wendy Rainey?
Yes.
Ken Jones is absent. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
The consent calendar's approved.
Okay, if you admit it, we're in the consent calendar. We don't have many bids. Those are contracts this time. Takes us to the board of officers, mayor's report. The council member A's report from AML is in there if you have any questions for her. The AML is having a, I don't know what to, they're setting up a group of mayors they think maybe can work towards, want to call it lobbying, but efforts towards school funding. I'm not sure if that came from school districts or whether it came from AML. Anyway, they're going to have an organize, an ideas meeting on Friday to see if there's interest in having some kind of a work group to work on that for mayors that are part of communities that have school districts. And I think the mayor of Anchorage and the mayor of maybe Kinnick Municipal Borough are chairing this meeting on Friday, Friday at noon, if anybody's interested in sitting in on that Zoom meeting at twelve. I can send you the Zoom link if you are interested in that. And obviously, you know, we're looking for a interim manager. I guess Sam is our acting manager now, and we've talked to Sam about that, and we need to have some discussions later in executive session, but part of that is we are actively searching for an interim manager. I would expect it to be at least six months until either Helen comes back or we find somebody to replace her. So, but Sam, everybody I know knows that she's doing a good job, and we just don't want to light the fire too hot, so get some help while we can and so we can do this. Anyway, we'll have that discussion later on. And I think Susan probably has some things with students and Stevens are talking about coming to town here pretty soon and want to visit us, so we'll talk about that later as well. So anyway, any questions? Councilmember Rainey, did you have anything to add to your report there?
Nope, just appreciate being sent for training.
And I appreciate the report. Sometimes we never hear back from people, but it's always good to share that information. Glad you were able to attend.
I did not use ChatGPT to write my report.
ChatGPT didn't attend the meetings. Okay, so that takes us to the city manager's report. Sam.
Okay, no written report next time, but I do have a couple things. So finally got everything worked out with UBS. The money is, if not transferred, will be there this week into KeyBank. Blake Phillips will be here for the next meeting, our new investment guide. Very excited, we have two highly qualified chief applicants. We'll be doing interviews next week, super excited about that. Kevin's wrapping up and putting to bed to never be again taken out of bed. The addresses and that's to the post office.
That's a lot.
And we'll get things rolling there. We'll start looking at what the next steps will be, the nine-one cellphone charge, if you know what we want to do moving forward. We're spending a fair amount of time looking into ways to help us in the finance department. So we've talked to multiple people, AML, some city managers. We're going to reach out to a couple people tomorrow, hoping that we can get something rolling in there. And Colin's going to give an update on the harbor, which is getting a lot of new stuff in.
So my report for this week, construction continues with floats and on the roadway, we've got J in part of K. No finger floats in yet, and I could put finger floats in for quite some time. Just gets them more space to maneuver, and that's two bolt applications, so they can be put in just about any time, probably once they're complete with two or three float sections, then they'll move them in. But as you noticed, we started far southwest corner with the roadway and with floats, and so we have to kind of throttle our work so we don't have dueling cranes, you know, right in that same corner. So the guys kind of go back and forth. They work ahead a little bit on one side, and then the other guys come in and do a little bit. So that's why it's kind of back and forth looking, just allowing each group to get their to get their work done without interference. So we're about a quarter of the way done on each pile on the roadway, and that's obviously going to run the full length, and it's going well. Having some equipment issues, but that's to be expected when it's, you know, ten degrees out and grease is thick and all that stuff. But they're making good progress. Floating portion, they're making good progress on that. I think, you know, they'd like to be a little bit farther along, we all would, but, you know, they're moving at a decent pace, so we'll get into schedule in a minute. Demolition, we're about, I don't say eighty percent done because of G is still there along with the approach to G, but they need that, so that's going to stay for the next probably couple months. Design is complete. We have all our IFC drawings and IFC plans and all our shop drawings and everything we need for this, which is good. The shop drawings are really important because you have design, which is big picture, you have the shop drawings, which are high level of detail, and then you get the as-built drawings. The as-bills and the shop drawings are what the harbor will take on once we get the operation and maintenance manual for the harbor. So for the, you know, into the future, they've got a good set of plans, and they know exactly what we have, and you have a parts list, and you have a maintenance list, and you have an operations list of all the things you need to know. So that's, that's a big document, and it's a really good thing to have because this will go on and on, you know, past most of our, our influence or our, you know, awareness of the harbor in the next thirty, forty years, hopefully. That's the plan. Environmental permitting, that is all complete. As I've said before, one of note is our Class A, which is the highest level or the most restrictive level of take. When I say take, I just mean like annoyance of, not like physical take, of marine mammals. And our Class A take of sea otters is at two of a total of thirty. So we have thirty opportunities to annoy, harass, somewhat displace sea otters in the harbor, and we're at two so far. And that's, that's pretty good. If that were to keep constant for the next six months, no problem. However, this is nature we're talking about. So I bring that up only as a note of the things that we're tracking, that we're required to track. All the other Class A and Class B for other mammals, you know, we have six, seven, eight hundred incidences of take possible, and we're at like ten. So most of them are, you know, we'll probably never see those thresholds. However, that sea otter is really tight on us, and that was as generous as we could get out of it at thirty, and we're at two right now. So, you know, we've been at it for a month now, if you include demo, and we've got two. So hopefully that will continue on that rate or lower.
Did you say thirty or sixty?
Thirty.
Oh, did you say sixty?
Two of thirty. So in the two months we've been doing demolition or doing work that would cross the threshold to take, and really that's just pounding, banging, vibration, that sort of thing, is that like sound influence. And if they get too close into that fifteen meter buffer, that's when it clicks off his take. We have those marine mammal observers or protected species observers, and then they just log it because they're there on the beach every day watching that stuff happen. So it's a good thing that they're there, and we're in a decent place right now. It's, you know, if we were at twenty right now, I might, you know, worry about that. But two of thirty. Funding, as you know, we need cash flow. Our raise grant has been fully executed. That's a very big thing. That's a big hurdle that we were able to overcome, and we have submitted for review our first reimbursement for two million dollars. It's pending approval. It, like everything else with the funding agency, has just taken time. We're eighteen million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars spent to date. We have one point six two five million remaining in a tier one grant for reimbursement, but that's gated. That comes at fifty percent project expenditure, seventy-five percent, hundred percent, and then project completion. So that one point sixty-five will be the life of the rest of the project, so we can't, we don't have access to that one point six at any given time. It's just chunks. It's like half million and three hundred thousand dollar chunks, so, but it's still there for us. We've got a, in that includes the twenty-five thousand dollar sewer pump out loan we have, and that's pending. We, that's sort of state, it's going slow, but we're working on it. But it's twenty-five grand for the sewer pump out station. Don't see any issues with that, it's just, it's just a long process. We're awaiting approval for increased funding for reimbursements, just so we can keep on that schedule. The plan right now is two million in January, four million in February, March, and April. We drop back down to two million, two million, and then the remainder of whatever we owe. So it could be two or three million after that. So that's, that's what we worked out. Seems to make the most sense with the billing from the contractor, and that kind of keeps us on a good pace and allows us to burn through the twenty million by July, because we don't want this to be hanging out there and still have money to be recouped when work is done, because then it gets really sticky. So we just have to make sure that we time everything right. So that's finance. Harbor vessel relocation, city impacts. Southwest corner of the harbor is closed. We moved the road closure sign closer to AC just because there's enough going on, and folks are getting a little too deep down Nickeloff, whereas it's a little inconvenient to turn around, so we bumped out that, that buffer there, and that will continue to march east down Nickeloff as the construction goes. Vessels will be placed back into the same or as close to previous, their previous slips as possible. So if you had a slip on JK whatever and whatever number, Tony's going to try to get you back into that one as best you can, provided you're the right length for it. So there's going to, you know, there might be some, some movement, but the goal is to get you to your, your, your previous spot or as close to it as possible, if that's what you want. If not, I'm sure there's some opportunities for movement, but that's the goal. We have vessel electrical connection testing that will begin in the coming months. We've got a testing, testing equipment that we're being given as part of the package for the project, where vessels can plug into this machine and test to see that their boat will be compliant with the new electrical system we have. Shouldn't be that different, but there's, you know, don't want to trip a bunch of breakers on the boat, don't want to trip a bunch of breakers on the pier. So we'll have that opportunity, still waiting on some of the equipment, but, so that'll be there. And that's a good thing, just so people know if they have to change some wiring or something like that. It's not something that the harbor or anybody can say, oh, your boat should be good or what you have to plug into it, just because, you know, nobody knows your wiring like the vessel owner does, so, but that's there. And we'll be announcing that in, you know, in the coming months. Two dates we're tracking that are really important to us is the week of April twenty-second. Serves is scheduled to begin. I think it's a little bit later, like twenty-fifth or something, but I'm looking at it as the twenty-second of April, this first big serves exercise, and then fishing season mid-May-ish. So, you know, those are our big, really, really working hard towards making everything that's floating available for tying up or as much as possible. So we're still on track for that, but those are the dates we're tracking and feeling pretty good so far. So street side stuff, it just depends. It's not the priority that the floating stuff is. If push comes to shove, and we say, where do we need to, to flow all the workers and all the effort, it's all going to be floating, so, and then we'll pick up the, the street side parking and whatnot, but we'll make sure we have access for boats and access for mariners to get to their boats. However, parking may still be jammed up through the early part of the summer. That's the best I know on that right now, pending your questions.
Questions for Phil?
Thanks for the detail.
No problem. Any questions for Sam? Okay, moving on to the clerk's report. Oh, great, great.
Okay. Any city council member can stop me if I'm incorrect in representing them. Can we, so it's not there, make sure this is working now, our community, all our comms working for our next city council meeting? Please, pretty please. Thank you. And then actually, one more thing, and the statement's in here from UBS, is that the amount, that nine point two, that's what's being transferred over to Key?
No.
I believe so, because that was the fourth.
Okay, so whatever UBS has.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
There was a small amount that we had to cash, but it'll still go over. It's just that they didn't, Blake didn't have that company, and then he'll just reinvest it.
Thank you. And KeyBank knows about our plan to borrow money for ourselves?
Yes, like in.
Okay, any other questions for Sam? Okay, the clerk's report.
So Monday, February fifth ended the declaration of candidacy period, and only Wendy Rainey running for seat D. No one has declared candidacy for seat E. Two for school board, Pete Hefner and Hank Krutov. There had been a third for school board. She has withdrawn. She's the junior high volleyball coach and chose to keep the ability to do that because if she had won school board, she wouldn't have been able to be employed by the district. Hospital services board, the two incumbents now are Elizabeth Sinear and Diane Ujoka, and they have, they're both declared candidates. So what does that mean? As Ann Schaefer quickly asked me. Any candidate is allowed to run as a write-in. They still have to declare candidacy in the same way that a person declares candidacy, it's just that their name will not be on a ballot, so they can declare as a write-in by coming to see me and filling out a form and having it notarized, and I check to make sure they're a registered voter and everything. And the deadline for being able to be a registered write-in is five p.m. the day before the election, which would be Monday, March fourth. If an election causes a vacancy in council by somebody not declaring, our charter says that of the outgoing members we draw out of a hat, but really Ann is the only outgoing member who would not be reelected, probably, since Wendy is running. And so it says she, that member shall continue to serve, which doesn't really seem fair, but Ann will, I guess, make that choice if we get there.
Yeah, but that's happened before.
Oh, yes, we have had it happen before. Sometimes people.
Mayor for fifteen years.
Right, some.
Due to that thing.
Yeah, I mean, I thought seven would be the max that a person could do because Ann actually filled a seat for a year, then had her two consecutive three-year terms, so she's termed out, but she might end up with eight, possibly. So she's termed out, but she might end up with eight, possibly. And possibly nobody's hearing this right now to come and declare, but they might hear it tomorrow. That's all I really have to report, just starting to, well, obviously, the other important thing on the ballot is Proposition 1. Not this Friday, but starting next Friday, three consecutive weeks, the ad will be in the Cordova Times, which lays out the entirety of Prop 1. It is posted in town, around town. It is on the website. And I think it, at least got talked about on Facebook with a link to the city website, the elections page. I did a lot of creating of sample ballots and numbered ballots today on my computer. So I will be putting out some sample ballots here shortly and posting that proposition again. So that's about it. Just a lot of election stuff going on in my office. Oh, and absentee in-person early voting starts next week on Tuesday. So when we redid the code in '21, we extended early voting. It had been two weeks leading up. Now it's three weeks leading up. Weekdays, I'll probably set up a booth in this room and then they'll just knock on my door and Tina or I'll come in and help people vote. Obviously, with how this is all looking, it may not be a huge turnout. So there may not be a huge early vote turnout either. But you never know. We'll see what happens. And anybody can call my office or email or swing by if they have questions about elections or any part of that.
Questions for the clerk? The staff quarterly reports? Comments, questions on those? Always appreciate the reports from the staff. Correspondents, a bunch of letters in there. Mostly verdict address changes, but we've dealt with that issue already. Any questions, comments, alerts? Okay, then we'll move on to ordinance resolutions. Ordinance 1215, the ordinance of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the transfer of $3 million in the general reserve fund, permanent fund, to the Harbor Enterprise Fund to sustain cash flow for the remainder of the South Harbor project. This is first reading. It does not require seven votes. Motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to adopt ordinance 1215.
I'll sign that.
Thank you. So, yeah, this was an ordinance that we just had public hearing on. And we have talked about this at a previous meeting and the need to have access to cash so that we've got resources to pay bills as they come in for the Harbor rebuild project. And the discussion at the previous meeting was that we would rather borrow money from ourselves and pay the interest in that and then borrow money from another entity and be spending that interest paying to another lender. So that's why we're proposing to do this transfer from our permanent fund.
Okay, Councilor Kingsman? Yeah, I discussed it. I don't see any terms necessarily on, as far as what interest we would pay back ourselves. You know, is that discussed? What did you, yes, what did you learn from our advisor Blake? He made reference that you discussed it with him.
So I did talk to him about it. And he said if it was possible with city council, and me too, because we don't really know. We need to get everything over there. We need to get things figured out and kind of get an idea of what that would look like. You know, previously, we did 5% on the last book truck loan. That's kind of the Fed number here. But I, we need to understand the, what we would be earning. So I think without any true, I, you know, we don't have a solid, like, or I just drop, we're going to pay for it now, or start paying your payments. You know, we, we don't even know for sure how long it's going to go down those things. So I will bring a resolution, like, codify, or not codifying, but memorializing those terms when it gets a little more solid.
No, that answers my question. Thank you for having a conversation, and I just want to make sure it's on the radar.
Any other council member ready?
No comments.
Governor Baylor?
Well, I got some thoughts on this. I don't support it the way it's, the way it's brought in front of us now. We're talking about $3 million. You can put that in a money market fund. You can collect four and a half, 5% interest. That's, that's $135,000 a year, $150,000 a year, depending on what your interest is. We've already committed to almost $4 million to this Harbor project. And I think that's enough for the community to throw into the pot here. Now you're asking the community to actually put in more money. And that loss of revenue is, is big. You know, you're looking at $11,000, $12,000 a month. So if we're going to structure this to where this money goes into a short-term money market fund and the Harbor draws down on that as they need it, and when they draw down that amount, they make up that interest payments, then I'm for it. But if we're just going to move this money over into, into the Harbor fund and it's going to sit there not collecting interest, which costs the city and the taxpayers of this community a lot of money, no, I'm not in favor of that. So it's unclear to me how we're, how this is going to be accomplished.
I guess my intention wasn't necessarily to move it into the general fund. KeyBank, we have an ANLIP account there, and I think we would transfer it there. Well, it's not going to sit long. We're going to be writing that checks to keep this money moving through the federal reimbursement system. But yeah, I guess my intention, I was trying to explain that the Harbor Enterprise Fund is who's eventually responsible for it. But yeah, my intention had been to put it into the ANLIP fund, which is a money market type account. I think it's five something, actually.
That's the interest rate?
I think so. It's pretty high. That's the, yeah, we have some money in there now. But it, it won't sit long.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Hi, I'm having a hard time hearing a lot of the conversation. And so I guess my question was about what the interest we'd be paying back to ourselves, because I didn't see that in the, in the packet. And I know you just spoke about the interest, but I couldn't hear it. So I think you answered my question, I just couldn't hear it.
Okay, I think I just told Casey that the idea is right now, you know, we need to get that money moved over to KeyBank. And Blake needs to get his head wrapped around his, his investments, returns. And he'll be here on the 21st, we'll have that discussion. It won't, and then we can really solidify the interest rate. But as far as payment terms go, we, it's just, you know, we're going to be taking that money, making payments, getting it reimbursed, making payments, getting reimbursed. So hopefully that money will be back in that account by July. I mean, I think that if we can manage Collins' own schedule, that's, would be the goal. But we will set an interest rate. I will write a resolution to memorialize the terms. I think the hard part is naming them when it's actually going to end, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'd rather pay ourselves than pay the bank, so, if we can and if our accounts can handle it. So I'm, I'm in support of this right now.
I think it would certainly help to have, like you say, a resolution that memorializes the terms and that this, this is, you know, it mentions borrow in here, but you know, it's not too specific on, on anything, which I understand you don't have. But I think a resolution to go along with this, memorializing exactly what's happening, that it's going to go into ANLIP pool or money market or whatever, drawn as is needed. Which is kind of, you know, it's referred to in here that we may not need at all. But it's just not real clear from just the ordinance. But the ordinance is what goes into code. All the other stuff doesn't necessarily have to be there, so. Any other comments on it? Again, this, this one, just simple majority?
I guess I, I know this originally was coming out because we didn't have MARAD money. We didn't have a security. That's initially where it comes from. Hey, we're, you only have so much good grace with the turning in on, in construction. And this, this is something we need. And so I just, I guess I want it on the record saying that we still need this cash flow. And it's my understanding, is that correct?
Correct. We need to be able to make large payments.
And, and then going back to some of, I mean, we need this, committed to it. And, and going back to some of council, council member Baylor's comments of, even as it stands, us, even, even if, I mean, we've discussed paying ourselves back in interest. But we still needed the money. We still need some cash flow. And maybe it won't be $3 million. But if we go to KeyBank and get a loan and we're paying 10%, even if we didn't pay ourselves any interest, we're still ahead. Because that money has to come from somewhere. So I, I look forward to seeing the resolution memorializing that, the exact terms. I'm grateful that we're taking that fiscal responsible approach to it. I, hopefully, the rest of the citizens appreciate that. And of course, with that, it terms in repayment. I mean, obviously, we're saying hopefully by July, but within that resolution, I, I think what is, the more detail you can put in there, the what-ifs, even if we never exercise them as far as, but really, so someone can look at it and say, okay, well, by this date, it's going to be repaid.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Councilor Baylor?
Yeah, I guess something to keep in mind, that this is, the Harbor is an enterprise fund. And like I said, we've already, citizens of Cordova have already said that they were willing to spend almost $4 million to get this project done. Now they're asking for more money. And it, I know it's going to get paid back, but it costs us money. I think the, the really simple way to look at this is the Harbor is asking for a line of credit of $3 million. And as long as that $3 million is sitting in a, in a short-term money market fund, collecting interest, and as the Harbor needs money, they draw it out, just like you would a business line of credit. They draw that money out. But they should be responsible to be paying interest on that money that they drew out. From the time they draw it, draw it out, the time they pay it. Now, they don't have to, you know, it's interest-only payment. It's a sweetheart deal. It is an enterprise fund. I just don't think the community should be drawing more money at this project than they've, they've already committed to. So that's the way I'm looking at it. Let's set this up. Line of credit for the Harbor, $3 million. That $3 million needs to get dedicated to a short-term bond fund or money market fund. That's where our investment committee or investor would help us out on. And as they draw it down, let's set an interest rate, whether that interest rate is 5% or 4.5%. That's, that's what I'm advocating for. Again, it's an enterprise fund. People that use this Harbor, I know it benefits the whole community, but it also benefits a lot of those people that make a living. So it's, it's just the way it goes. So that's what I would support. I'm not going to support something that just hands over $3 million.
Yeah, I think we got your concerns there. My, my concern, I guess my biggest concern is, not that it really matters, but is that everybody keeps in mind that it is just a short-term loan from the permanent fund. It's not another $3 million to the project. And, you know, my concern is that we would end up, the end of the project, and be in $3 million short and saying, well, here it is, we got $3 million. And then permanent fund takes 30 years to get its money back. So I think the, the terms need to be written, so that it has to be paid back in certain part time. Any other comments, questions? Okay, this is just a voice vote. So all those in favor of ordinance 1215, say aye.
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 How did Tom Baylor vote? Do we know? Tom, did you vote yes or no on that?
For abstain.
Councilmember Baylor, how did you vote on that?
I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Oh.
I voted no.
No.
I'm sorry, I voted no, just because I think I need more information before I can make that money.
That's fine, I just didn't hear you. Okay.
Yeah, I apologize, I had it on mute.
Yep. So is it four to one, motion carries?
Okay, Resolution 022407, the resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the application and execution of a loan in the Alaska Drinking Water Fund in an aggregate amount not to exceed $75,000 to finance the water system master plan project.
I move to approve Resolution 022407. Second.
Councilmember ready?
The fact that it's 100% forgiveness loan makes me say, yeah, go for it. For both the water and the wastewater, but I think we're voting on water first. But yeah, I, I appreciate getting money that we don't have to pay back.
Hey, councilmember Herbert?
Yeah, I, just as councilmember Randy said, it seems like a no-brainer. And I think the, having funding to actually do a water systems master plan sort of fits in with the work. I mean, the, the city's going to be getting some results from the lead and copper survey. So that'll be information that can feed into developing a water systems master plan. And it's kind of shocking to read that our current plan is from 1987. I think some things have other changes in that. So this will be a great opportunity to get current. And thank you for the background for this item.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No comment, I'm in support.
Governor Baylor?
I'm in support.
Councilwoman Kingsman?
Yeah, I'll be in support in here and I guess in the packet. Is this, it seems like it's lumped together as one, or are we going to vote separately or vote together?
Separate votes.
One is water and one is wastewater.
Yeah, I'm in support unless staff can say there's some negative strings attached to this that we're not aware of. I mean, other, other, what you presented seems great, and I absolutely am in support of it. But of course, would appreciate any transparency that I might be missing.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
I think councilmember Sherman found a typo in 22407. The last paragraph says acting city manager three times, and it should say interim. And that'll be important because of the grants and loans and whatever. They need to see this, and it needs to say interim. So I can make that administratively, that change. I already have, actually.
Question, the final whereas, you said it's a 20-year term. It doesn't, the, the resolution doesn't say anything about the loan forgiveness. The, I understand paperwork does.
Yeah, it's because that's, it's a requirement of the clean water loan or the drinking water loan to have this resolution in this form. But in their intended use plan, it clearly shows that it's fully subsidized. But that is just the way they, and they want a term of repayment. It's paperwork.
When do you know that it's forgiven?
We already know. We, we were chosen and given, like, we pre-qualified for the 100% just because of the way that the money moves between the feds and the state. They have a certain...
Right, yeah. Okay.
Any other comments? I think everybody had a chance yet. Voice vote again, all those in favor of Resolution 022407, say aye.
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 Votes? Resolution 022408, the resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the application and execution of a loan from the Alaska Clean Water Fund in an aggregate amount not to exceed $75,000 to finance the wastewater system master plan...
in an aggregate amount not to exceed $75,000 to finance the wastewater system master plan project.
I guess I'll move to approve motion 02 dash 24 dash 08.
I'll second.
Councilmember Kingsman?
I approve it. I mean, discussed it, makes sense.
Councilmember Rainey?
I approve.
Councilmember Harper?
I support this.
Councilmember Baylor?
Yes, I agree.
Councilmember Shaver?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of resolution 022408, say aye.
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 Close? You should carry your hands. We have no unfinished business, new and miscellaneous business pending agenda.
Okay, so we talked about this a little bit, but I sent you guys an email about, Representative Stutes and Senator Stevens are coming to Cordoba on March 2nd. It's a Saturday. They would like to meet with council informally, like 3:00 to 3:30. And I think we can have this room or one of these rooms to do it. And then I think they are scheduling a public meeting for, uh, 3:30 to 5:00 or something afterwards. So, um, if a few of you can make it, it doesn't have to be a quorum or anything, but I'm going to schedule that. I think enough of you had said that that would work. They happen to also be having, I think, something at the Powder House on Sunday. But I'm sure they will advertise and, and you'll see more before then. And then, let's see, so on the 21st, which is our next regular meeting, we will have the public hearing on ordinance 1215. Sam mentioned Blake Phillips is gonna come as a guest speaker. And maybe he will help with that resolution, memorializing the terms. Or we will work on that and we will make sure that that supports ordinance 1215. So that'll be on the 21st as well. I think those were the things I had. Anybody else?
We're gonna probably have our, pending your request, executive session probably on your.
Oh.
Evaluation.
Okay.
I was still missing a couple evaluations. If you could get those in to me.
So you want?
If you haven't yet.
The clerk's.
The clerk's.
Review in, in executive session?
Yeah. Unless you wanted an open session.
Well, I think the way we've done it before is you guys will all meet to talk about it. And then one or two, you will talk to me after. That's fine.
I think we have to give you the opportunity.
True, and I, I will not take that opportunity to have it in open. You can talk about me. Okay.
And we will, hopefully we'll be able to have executive session again on the interim manager.
F, okay.
But we'll see where, depending on how the conversation goes tonight, we may have more or less to talk about.
Okay. And that's it. Everybody watched the Super Bowl on Sunday.
Anybody have anything else they want to get on the agenda?
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, I, and with our work session we had today, just thinking about our disaster plan, our disaster plan review that, I don't have it with me unfortunately, I'm traveling. But if, when the pandemic was going, if, if you remember, you were one of the voices that raised some concern along with myself. Staff kind of ran with this and there was a lot of misinformation out there, as we all know, some false information looking back, but we didn't know at the time. But there was a push for staff to start declaring disasters and, and other things. And myself and I think a couple others, council were reading their plan going, wait, this, council has a say in this. They were debating that, saying, no, you don't. And it really wasn't until Joni, Joni Jolie's, last name there, called in and she was responsible for writing that plan, said, no, council absolutely has a voice in this. So we kind of cruised by that and it just, this talk tonight kind of reminded me is, do we need to maybe go back and make sure that wording, wording is correct and understood for, for the future councils and, and anything else that comes up. And again, the example of, we're not gonna tell the firefighters how to fight a fire, but the pandemic, the pandemic was kind of an interesting one where disasters were being declared and I know you were, I was sitting back going, oh, let's, just hang on here. We don't need to close downtown yet. And we were being told that we didn't have a say in it. So do we need to review that to make sure that their wording is correct and update their wording or not? I'm just kind of putting that out there. See what you thought.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'll, I'll get with Heather and that's on the, is that planned on the city website?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it is, yeah. Our emergency operations plan. We'll take a look at that and, and though I think part of, part of that whole thing, Tom, is that, you know, there's, there can be incidents that are, you know, the main street is burning down is, is, is more time critical, I guess, than the COVID ended up being. And early on, nobody knew how critical it was, you know? In hindsight, we can say that, yeah, we, we had the time. But I, I think you and I and some others maybe had, thought that there was time for council to meet and make those decisions rather than having one or two individuals make mandates for the whole community to have to follow. And I think we did get that changed to where we could at least, within seven days or whatever it was after a mandate, we could, we could override that or whatnot. So I, I think those, those things have to be looked at in the, in the, in our plan. And certainly we've, when did they say our, our plan was from 22? So that's pretty recent. They should have some, some updates on it. Their slide is from 2013. Certainly they've learned something in 11 years with all the different things that have happened, so. But yeah, I'll take a look at that, Tom, and if we need to bring it for some changes or clarification. It certainly should be reviewed by, by council anyway. I think it was probably approved if, if our latest one is 2022. But it can always be updated for sure. Had a couple other hands up there.
Um, I'm just going through this list of future agenda items. If someone could give us, maybe, see if you can give us some context on council discussion about incentives and investment in Cordoba. And more context on that, what's needed for us or our discussion that isn't already kind of, or could be piggybacked on revenue, number four, and possibly even number 11. We need revenue. How can we consolidate that into one agenda item? Or maybe it doesn't make sense to. So if I'm remembering correctly, number three was looking more at potential property tax incentives, which we were gonna consider as a different discussion than item four, which is on the, I believe, like sales tax side. Number three is because the state legislature opened up more allowances for what cities can do when it comes to providing those sort of incentives. And so it kind of warranted a larger talk where we can focus just on that topic. Okay, perfect. So then is it a, I see 2021 on there. I know that conversation we had was in 2023. I'm just curious if that was.
No, I think it was originally put on in 2021. And I think that that's what the Title V and rewrite that we're bringing possibly at the next meeting for first reading.
Okay, is, that was my next question, was Title V. So that's, is moving forward, is there?
Well, I forgot how she left.
Another work session to go through it or no?
Holly's gonna have the ordinance with all her notes from the, the meetings. She's talked to a few staff and we're gonna bring that forward in the meeting. And I think at that point we decide if you guys are happy with the way the ordinance is written or if we need to have some more work sessions to move it, to make it where we want it to be. And we need to cut, we have a pile of information.
Yes.
That needs to get consolidated into a format that we can evaluate. That is.
That's including it.
But it's not including the, the.
It's sales tax and property tax.
Okay, yeah, but not the.
But not the, not the.
Not number four.
Yeah.
Number three, not incentives or investments.
That one we just decided to do once we have.
That's the, that's the one where we need to have the talk where, you know, like, Ken says that, like, you know, he had a potential plan where if you build X number of units, then you get X percent off for somebody. You know, like, are we gonna create like a standardized program? But before we can do that, we need to figure out if or what there is any, you know, appetite for, so. So we need Title V to be complete before we can move up to that, is that right? No, I mean, they're not, they're not like.
Mutually exclusive.
Yeah.
I just think it's resources.
Yeah, good answer, good answer.
I mean, I guess I would just like seeing, is there some possibility of getting some dates? And what does it look like? Does it look like it's gonna come forth as just more agenda discussion? Which one of these are like a work session? So revenues, to me that looks like, and probably, and I think Wendy brought this one for number 11. 11 possibly could be rolled up into number four. Yes, no? Councilmember Rainey speaking on that?
Can you get us an employee to do the work for that work session?
We have some open positions.
If I remember correctly, the revenue is gonna come, the exemptions is gonna come before you as a ordinance because the comments that the last meeting were something along the lines of, when we actually put an ordinance out there, it means that we're really taking a look and making some changes. And that's when people really get involved. And so we'll bring that ordinance before, you know, get it, get it that first reading to activate that we're going through the ordinance process. And then if during the review of that, at that meeting, it's determined we need to do more work sessions to refine it, then we will. So that's, you're speaking specifically to four, if we had an ordinance that was tackling head tax, motor vehicle fees, airline landing tax, any other options in there, correct? Um, I think it was, I think it's, isn't it more focused on like the sales tax, like?
Exemptions?
Yeah, are you going to be exempting boat motors or like? Okay, see, I'm not talking about that. Number four is revenue, which is in parentheses, exploring further options, which I feel like we have explored some options for revenue. How, what's our next step? How do we go and explore head tax? How do we go?
I guess we are still working on the motor vehicle base on our list. It's a long-term process. Head tax, Tony. We can work with Tony on that. I think we had that discussion about that going in.
Yeah.
Well, and the exemptions falls into that because redoing our exemption list will help get income that we're not getting because being exempt. So that's also part of an income.
Because I'm not really sure what you mean.
Oh, so, so, I mean, we've already talked about this longer than we needed to. So does it need to be an agenda item to discuss more then, I guess, at this point? I, I, the.
I think the next step is implementation.
Well, I'd say the adding of new taxes, like the motor vehicle fee or airline landing tax, things like that. Staff hasn't had time to look into those new additions. We've been just dealing with the existing tax code as it is. And we wanna finish that out before we then start adding in new things. Because again, it's just, it's a time issue. We just don't have time to do it all. So we're not, we're not ready for number four. Okay, that's, it's still with staff right now? Yes. Perfect. And, and we could, again, I'm gonna just, just to clean up this a little bit, lump number 11 in there. Exploring the option for RV or inbound ferry tax or what fee or permit. I mean, if you could, there's probably several different terms you could use in there. Obviously that one will have to have imagine legal involved with that one of what we can do, what's common practice. Thank you. Appreciate the time on that. I appreciate that. Always would like to clean up our list as much as possible. So we make room for new items on there, keep things moving. Thank you, staff.
Mr. Harper?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about the Alaska Mariculture Alliance seat because the city, and I thought they, I thought that the city received a letter of interest.
Yeah, and I have a voicemail to call back, the executive director, that there's more to it than, I, I mean, I think there's money involved. Like we have to.
Be a member?
Yeah, and it didn't sound inexpensive either.
Okay.
And I didn't know if we wanted that or exactly what it entailed. I almost, I'm just gonna call him or, and ask him to lay it out in like a one-pager.
Okay.
And let us know exactly what it means. And is he representing us on the board? Are we members? What exactly does it mean? I'm not even.
It would mean, he wouldn't be a board member. I mean, a, a person who fills that seat would be eligible to be a board member, but initially it's just the city being a member of the Alaska Mariculture Alliance, like as if somebody were a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Yeah. So it's not appointing somebody to a board seat at this point. Thanks.
Um, member nine was put on here before I was on the council and it just says update filed up in fall of '23. And I just wondered what that was, like, is that something that we're looking at or discussing? Or did, I was just looking for the update. Since it said fall of '23, I wasn't really sure of the history on that.
We had one, either, either a work session or an agenda item and we discussed it. And there were a lot of different opinions. And we said we were gonna follow up, but I don't really 100% know if anybody was ready to suggest an ordinance. Council members can sponsor legislation. So you could write an ordinance and ask the mayor to put it on the agenda or get a second council member to put it on the agenda.
I think with so much differing opinion, that's what I was anticipating doing after it was on the agenda, but there was so much differing opinion on it that I probably would be very prudent to do. So I, it absolutely could be another agenda item. I think, and I don't know that there's any additional material, but probably to just have, is this something that current council is in favor of or does it just need to be reviewed? Once and for all. I don't know. That can probably come forward when we have a smaller package, I guess. I'll leave that to your discretion.
And there, Anne has left the meeting and now there are four of you here. So I'd hate to remove it with not all four of you.
No, I was just looking for the background on it.
I would, I would like to see it moved forward to the agenda to once and for all discuss. And if there, and, and from there, I would absolutely, if there's still, if there is an appetite for it, I would move forward and, and working, I guess, with you and putting it forward.
I can't recall what I put in the packet the last time, but maybe I'll find exactly that and just bring it to the next meeting that isn't huge.
I, I wanna say it probably was around July, noon July.
Well, look, I, I usually put a date, so that's always a win.
It's one of those things that, until you do have it on an agenda.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Just continue on it.
Yes, we do.
Becoming a comment.
Absolutely. Somebody, somebody comments about councilmember Rainey for bringing up.
Any other things for the?
Can you help on one?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, number two, under resolutions, ordinances and other items disposable of ASLS 79258, is that the one that's out for?
No.
I have no idea what that is.
No, that is, I think it was the cliff across from the boatyard. The boat, yeah, the, the, Greg Meyer.
Uh, oh, when Craig Myers wanted to.
Put in a letter of interest, council had an executive session about it and then chose not to put it out to RFP. I can remove it altogether if I want. I don't know where it sits.
Well, if that's what, if that's what it is, I think we should confirm.
Isn't that 79258?
Somebody can look up.
All right, I'll look it up for sure, but I'm almost positive that's what that is.
And we've got number one out for RFPs right now, correct?
Yes, that went out last Wednesday.
Oh, so can I take that off?
Um, I mean.
No, all right, just leave it.
Hopefully we'll have something to bring back.
I just wanted to change this to like 12-point font someday.
Okay, anything else for the pending agenda? On the line, anything for the pending agenda, Tom? You said Anne left, right?
Yes.
Don't forget.
She had a flight. She had a flight.
Okay. Audience participation. Anybody from the audience have anything to say about anything? We're still, still with staff and our RCAC representative. So council comments, we do have an executive session, but we'll do council comments first. Councilmember Carpenter?
Sure, thank you. I wanted to just do a quick update because some of these topics have come up. So the Prince Wayne Sound Economic Development District, my day job capacity, we have completed the housing needs assessment report and we just started talking about strategies. I anticipate working with Kevin to talk about the joint session with planning and zoning and the council at some point in the next couple of months to talk about strategies. The economic development district is doing a lot of work on, I guess, what I would call working with local partners to talk about climate change response. We've been doing some work with Noah, social scientist from Juneau, who now has grant funding in partnership with the Prince Wayne Sound Science Center, so I think you'll be hearing more about that. And we are also working with the Chibach Regional Resources Commission applying for a grant to do some regional climate response planning coordination. We also just got some funding to hire, the colleague, an Arctic Energy Ambassador, it's U.S. Department of Energy money that's coming through the Alaska Municipal League, and so we're hiring Ruben Brown to work with us part-time for the Chibach region to help coordinate, facilitate moving energy projects forward. And we're also doing a childcare solutions forum on the 23rd and 24th of February. So in the afternoon of the 23rd, we're going to be offering free first aid responder training for folks who want to be childcare providers. And then on Saturday morning, we're having a childcare solutions roundtable with some representatives from the state coming and also some folks from THREDD Alaska, which is the childcare network organization. So I hope folks can participate and I'd be happy to share that information with the clerk if you want to circulate it to folks. Thank you. And also childcare will be provided in those sessions for people who want to come.
Thank you. That's Mr. Kipling.
Yes, and thank you for the work session. It is informative, it's a lot of information in a short period of time. I appreciate councilmember Baylor's insight on calling our emergency response plan to the forefront. Obviously, it's no surprise that now is the time to review that, while we're not actively in need of using it, so thank you for that prudence. Very, very disheartened with outside our community in the sense that we have an actual seat that is vacant and no one is filling it and someone could put their name in and no one is. So that is really concerning, disheartening, as again, I've said several times, it's, it's really not scary here, we're a pretty good group of people. We disagree on things, but we're, we're professional, we're civilized, and I think we get things moving for our community. And if you don't think we do, that's even more reason for you to go and submit your name now as, as a ride in, which is unfortunate, because now you're putting more resources on, or more burden and strain on our staff that's already stretched thin, but that's to the side. And along those same lines, we were, we were discussing some fiscally important things that, I mean, yes, we have a plan, it's a $3 million loan, but $3 million isn't a small amount. And really, there's no public participation for that, no opinion on that, no one cares about that. But we're changing addresses to one side or the other and we had more participation in our audience than I've seen in months. Really, really disappointed in our community over that. Yes, there, we, we discuss a lot of important things in here, we make a lot of important decisions. That, that can affect you, $3 million if, you know, could go one way or another, and I appreciate councilmember Baylor's prudence again on that and, and making sure that staff is coming forward with correct terms and clear and concise memorialized resolution on that, so. Hopefully, not that anyone's even listening right now, because it's not live streamed, but when you get the recording tomorrow, maybe, hopefully, someone will decide to take a little bit of action. And if not anything else, come to some of our city council meetings, because we do discuss important things here. And it is the community that you choose to live in, and so it does actually affect you. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Murray.
Really? You want me to vote for that?
Sure.
Vote for me, for seat B. I appreciate the work session, that was really informative and all the work of staff. I appreciate Sam doing two jobs and doing it well. And just thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna, my comments are gonna dissolve around the permanent fund. You know, we have an opportunity here, it, there's a term called generational wealth. We have an opportunity here to invest that money and keep that money moving forward and growing for generations to come, because we don't really have a way to replace it. The only way we're going to increase that is by investing it and saving it and using it prudently. There's not going to be another windfall from the oil money or anything like that coming along. When we sell property, city property, that money is supposed to go into the permanent fund, but I tell you, over the years, nobody's given us a straight answer when that question's asked. And people have bought the property on a time, basically the loan. And, oh, no, that's, that's, that doesn't go in there because that's lease payments, you know, they, your city managers in the past have played, played games with that money, so we're not rebuilding it that way. We don't have a way to generate money to put back into that permanent fund. Now, when we built the civic center you're all sitting in, we doled out several more million dollars for that to help that bring, it was over budget and we needed more millions of dollars. Well, we're going to make money, this thing's going to produce money, we're going to hold conventions here and that, well, they told us it was going to get paid back or they will make payments back. It wasn't, I don't think, on a resolution. And it's not going to happen. And our city manager is today, or that we have today, said there's no way that we'll ever make money. So that money's gone, gone forever. We drew out money for the, what was it? It was a school reimbursement, the governor pulled away, we had to pull money out for that and to make our obligation to this, to the school district, which I agreed with and voted for. Then what was it, like a year later or something, the governor came back and that money came back to us. Now myself, and I know the mayor was on council at the time, and others had put that back into the permanent fund. We have people on council saying, oh, well, we can spend it over here, we can spend it over there, it's, it's free money. We gotta get more disciplined with this thing. We've got to get, keep it invested and we've got to grow it. And like the gentleman from Key Bank said, you know, give them some time, give them some effort, we can get this thing growing, get it doubled maybe in 14, 15 years and then we can start using the interest and we maybe take 2%, 3% out of it to help balance our budget. But we can't keep chipping away at it. And now we're looking at $3 million out of it, and that $3 million is not generating income, that's money lost. And we, it's, it's just, we have to be careful about this and we owe it to the future generations to keep that permanent fund active and to grow it. And, and I'm just, for those of you that, there's what they call the rule of 72, you take your interest based times divided into 72, and I'll tell you how many years it takes to double. So if we can get 4% interest, you know, in, in 17 years or something like that, we can double that amount if we just discipline. But we need to do it. We need to pay for the things we need to pay for, the essentials, but we've got to leave that loan and start growing that, so that's my spiel for the night. Thanks.
Thank you.
Could I add just one more thing?
One more round.
I just wanted to say thank you, Sam, for working with the chamber. I saw that the chambers report that they are actively marketing the Cordova Center and bringing in bigger groups for conferences here, and I think that's great, and thank you for working with them on the MRU.
Okay, Anne was not here, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have one more item on our agenda, executive session, council discussion of the city manager's contract and its terms and the contract terms for interim city manager. Will you give a motion?
Motion to the executive session. Discussion of the city manager's contract and its terms and the contract terms for interim city manager, which both involve matters of immediate knowledge of which would carry the impact of the first.
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? Cheryl and Sam released the first remarks, if.
No objection, you're just going to say on that motion?
Yeah, no, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will go into executive session after we've cleared the rules.
Ready to come out?
Yep. We are out of executive session. We just discussed the interim manager and the current manager's contract and no decisions were made, so. With that and business being concluded, we will adjourn the meeting.